All right, this time we'll call work session. The council of education order set people going to 2021. We will ask not the least to give them questions.
We will plead by ear. Father, we thank thee for thy many blessings, keep us from falling, teach us to be true to each other ourselves indeed, Lord, guide and direct us as we do the work of the Coffey County School System for our boys and girls and our students and our entire community here in Coffey County. We just thank for the opportunities to be here and just bless those folks who are going through hard times with COVID or whatever else they're dealing with, Lord. We thank you for this opportunity. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Do you want to need a motion to adopt the agenda if there's more changes?
Please put your copy of the agenda present.
Mr. President, wait a second. All better. Okay. Don't relax.
Thank you, Mr. Dowlers. We have the first item on our work session is our school update. We have George Washington Carver's administrative team here with Mr. Abe Morris as principal and several of his staff members, and so we're excited to have a report tonight from George Washington. Welcome.
Good evening, good evening. I need to do this on.
It's up to you to whatever your question is.
I'll put it back on when I'm done talking. Thank y'all for giving us a little time to meet with you and present what we've got going on on the freshman campus, but before I do that, I want to thank y'all for reinvesting money back into the campus. I kind of want to keep you updated on what we've got going on. I talked to Mr. Spikes today. They're finishing up our bathrooms this week and maybe into the weekend a little bit. The plumbers may be working. They should be done with the floors of the actual kitchen next week, middle of next week, and then they'll reassemble that kitchen equipment in the kitchen. The cafeteria is done and it's ready to be eaten in. Mid-October for freezers and coolers to be brought, and the thing they're waiting on the most is an actual serving line. Should be around December the 11th when it comes in, and that's just nothing to do with construction or anything other than things are so backed up right now that they're telling us that's hopefully the delivery date on that. We've got the doors installed, the new doors all through the campus. It's looking really, really good, and so we appreciate it again, you know, y'all thinking about us. We've got roof construction coming up. I don't know when the date is for that, and then Logan told me we'll be getting our new camera systems we put in starting next week. So again, we've got a lot going on over there at the campus. It looks a lot different than it did even just a few months ago, so if you're around the campus and you want to come check it out, please do, and we'll be glad to walk you around. Tonight I've got Samona Watts with me. She's our academic coach, a full-time academic coach, and we've got Shawana Polk. She's our PBIS leader and one of our science teachers. So they helped us put this presentation together. Tonight we want to focus on PBLs because that's if you look under teaching and instruction, that's the first of that pillar is PBLs or project-based learning. And I know you hear a lot about it, but I don't know if you've actually seen what we've got going on with us, so I think you'll be excited to see that. And then I know you've heard about PBIS, and that's one of the main focuses on our campus, so Ms. Polk is also going to help us walk through that. So I'll turn it over to these ladies.
Thank you for having us. Okay, so this is our update from George Washington Carver freshman campus. We are going to focus on project-based learning. Okay, project-based learning, and this is something that pre-COVID, we have really been gung ho at our campus with making sure that our students are involved in PBLs is what we call them. And just basically, project-based learning is a it's just a way of teaching so that students are actively engaged in the assignments and the projects in a very meaningful way. And I know when you hear project-based learning, you hear the word project. Well, there's a difference between project and project-based learning. With a project, when students are doing projects, the project is something that takes place at the end of the unit, okay? This is after the teacher has done all of the instruction, the content has been covered, and they've done all the usual things, and then at the very end, you have a project that culminates or ends the unit. Well, project-based learning, it differs in that it's actually the way that you teach. It's your vehicle, teaching the important knowledge and skill that the students need to learn. It actually brings the curriculum and the instruction. Is this home present? Okay, now, some things that several of our teachers on campus, these are just some comments that they have with regards to how they feel and what they think about the results that they get after their students have experienced PBLs. Things like, you know, they love to watch how their students are getting a side about the project, how their students are how they take pride in how they're helping their students create something that is going to benefit the campus. And then they see where students who typically who typically struggle with your basic book and paper concepts, they literally just come alive with these hands-on activities and experiences. Here's another quote, "I saw leaders and problem solvers arise as we worked together." With the PBL experience, you're going to see this. You're going to see your students actually come forth, and you'll see these leaders come forth, they're problem solvers, because it's all about looking at a problem and saying, "How can I solve this problem, and I'm going to learn as I'm doing it?" And the last one, "I enjoyed the interaction between community leaders, business partners, and our students." These PBLs, their success, the cornerstone of their success rests on our business partners, our community leaders. They help us with the resources. They help us show the students that there's a connection between school and community. Here's one of our PBLs. This is actually one that Ms. Polk and I were a part of. It was our freshman campus Black History Gallery Walk and Living Museum. Let me just kind of back up a little bit. Your PBLs, they're driven by, think about it. There we go. Our PBLs, they have an overarching question, and I put this particular one, it was, "How can we celebrate the accomplishments of both prominently and locally known members of the Black community?" And this was featured primarily during February, our Black History Month. We started before in first semester because I wanted to have my honors lit students to be a part of it, my first semester students as well as my second semester students. And Ms. Polk, she partnered with me with her physical science students, and we also partnered with our student council. But in essence, what they did, they worked to create these presentations, these displays. There were 25 literature composition and physical science standards that were covered. There were over 300 students participated, and and on the day of the actual, you know, reveal, we had third, fourth, and fifth grade students from Patilla Elementary and quest students from Eastside, Westside, Nichols Elementary. They were bused to our campus. We had set up a schedule, and they actually participated in the activity by taking a tour. And I forgot to include in this, I actually reached up to some of my past students that were at the main campus, and they served as tour guides and speakers for the little ones during this tour. And it was an interactive tour because with each of the displays, there were barcodes that if you if you selected it, it actually gave them more information about the display. And these displays, this is just a sampling of some of those displays, including the Living Museum where we invited some members of our community who knew a lot about our freshman campus, a lot about our Black community here in Nogus, Georgia, and it was literally that, a living museum where in the gym, they were able to go out and meet these people. You can see some of those displays there featured. We had an outdoor classroom PBL where we had six math standards, three agricultural standards that were covered, and this was something that took place between Ms. Douglas's ESOL students or ESOL class and our ACT teacher at the time.
She was Ms. Bennett.
It was Ms. Bennett. And again, you see, there's the overarching question. And with this one, this particular one, and wait till you see what this picture looks like. Let's see if we can get there. Okay, here are some of the students here working. They actually took a place at our school that the area right outside of our media center. They had to measure, they had to decide, you know, the dimensions of these parts, these ventures that they created, this outdoor classroom. They went from the very beginning stages all the way through to the end. And here you're seeing them line down the rocks so that, you know, you're not sitting in a bunch of mud, and there you go. There's a finished product. And our teachers used this. Again, this was something that was a problem. Our students and the teacher, you know, driving this PBL, saw the problem. They saw that here's a way that we can actually move outside and have classroom or have class. There was also a GWC unit T where they were selling tea to our campus. It had 18 total standards. Again, there's a driving question. "How can we as freshman entrepreneurs design, plan, and facilitate a school business that follows the rules and maximizes profit?" And that was quite successful, but the students really got a kick out of that one. So at GWC, we want our students to be very successful, and how do we do that? Well, the big F pact.
Which is PBIS, which is the Positive Behavior Intervention and Support. For the past two, well, couple of years that I've been on the PBIS team, we've been trying to find ways that we can, let me go back. Okay, that we reach out to the stakeholders, different business partners. As you saw during the previous slides, there's a lot of different business partners that we reach out to, and we receive donations of several ways to help fund our PBIS and our PBL projects. So we use that, and we actually take and we reward our students for positive behavior. So we'll take our data from Swiss, from Infinite Campus, and also from, see, both of them are Infinite Campus attendees and grades, and we get our behavior from Swiss. We'll take that and we'll make a goal, looking at the data that we receive, and once we receive that goal, we'll set that for the students. They have to meet that goal in order to receive whatever reward that we actually set. We have done several things with them here, some things that we have done. We brought the icy truck to the school. They loved that, they got a kick out of that. We actually had our culture, what was it, the culture color wars.
Yes.
And so we had wars between different colors, maroon, gold, white, silver, but in order for them to participate, this is massive getting in my way. In order for them to participate, they had to reach the goal. So that was something for them to work towards. So we love doing this. It's a way for us to connect with them, to build relationships with them. We also look at different cultures and try to find ways that we can bring that into our PBIS program. Here's a little video of them doing different PBIS activities that we've had throughout the years. Let's see if I can get the play maybe.
I don't see the little dial. Okay, there it is.
Uh-uh.
What is this?
I don't know. It won't explain, but just.
I think that one synced up to your account. I don't think the.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we'll share it with you at a later date, but they enjoy these PBIS activities, and we try to have them throughout the year. We'll call them many incentive days. It's just a little small token, and then we build up. We have some for Halloween. We'll have our class of tree. They get to walk around and get candy from all of their teachers, and we all dress up and we decorate and have it looking all spooky. We have a haunted house for them to go in and get popcorn. There's just a lot of different things that we do and that the kids love to do, and through this, they actually improve their behavior and their academic success.
You guys have any questions for us? I mean, I know that was kind of quick, but if there's anything I can clarify or answer for you.
I just want to say I'm just really proud of the work y'all are doing. That's fantastic. When we developed our strategic plan, we talked about transforming the K-12 experience for students and transforming the K-12 classroom and transforming the relationship between the business and school community, and y'all are certainly doing that. I was over there the other day and I saw those picnic tables. Did your students, your classes construct those? Were those.
Yeah, Ms. Bennett and Ms. and some of our math groups got together, and those were all funds that were given to us from local businesses, so it didn't cost the school anything, didn't cost the system anything. We got a lot out of it, and we're going to keep getting a lot out of it.
Those are really nice picnic tables.
They did a really good job.
I thought I bet the students built it, but I wasn't real sure, but thank y'all for what you're doing. That's tremendous.
Thank y'all. If you ever do anything, you're on our site tab, just come see us.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
All right. The next item on our agenda is the minutes from our previous board meeting. If you want to take a moment, look over those, and if it meets everyone's approval, we'll place that on the consent agenda. Next up is our finance reports, and the first report that we have is the FY '21 year-end financials, and we have Ms. Yano here, our finance director. If you want to kind of go through those different reports, Ms. Yano, and tell the board what we have here.
We'll start with the, this report here, which you would hear. We were able to close our fiscal year '21 last week, so this report reflects our final closeout numbers as of June 30, 2021. We started the fiscal year July 1 of 2020 with a fund balance of $19,349,718.10. We ended the fiscal year with $22,765,555.18. During the midterm, the Department of Ed restored some of the austerity that we had at the beginning of the year, so that is reflected here in this is the revenues and And this report is our four-year comparison, and again, you can see as of June 30, the So we have increased our fund equity approximately 3.4 million, and again, the QBE allotment was restored at the midterm for about $2.5 million there. This report is a detailed report that shows our revenue sources and our different expenditures throughout the school system. There is a note written in. This is an in-house report that is used. We received some in-kind contributions through FEMA and GMA that we had to report at the end of the fiscal year. This funding code was not on this report, so I had to, I put it in because we were showing that it wasn't in balance, so I had to manually put it in. Now it is in there with DOE, but the contributions that were added was the $124,540, and those were like the masks, the hand sanitizer, backpack sprayers and sanitizers, all the in-kind contributions that we received. We had to report that in our general fund. So that is reflected there in with our revenue. So the revenue that we ended fiscal year '21 with was the $70,803,116.16. These are our detail of our expenditures by the additions, the functions of the school system. We ended the fiscal year with total expenditures of $67,384,473.92. So the fund equity there again is the $22,765,555.18 in school year. Any questions on those, the alts?
That's the floss report. You're right.
Oh. It's on August. It'll be August. Yes, the August has this floss.
So you want to go on to the 22 year?
This is the final report for July, beginning of school year '22. So for this, again, it shows our beginning fund balance that we begin the school year with for '22, and the end of the month for July '22, we ended with $22,834,79. The salaries for July, most of those are reflected in our June because they are accrued for July and August for all our 10-month employees. So, and then the comparison report, the four-year comparison, here you see the $22,834,79 there. And again, the detailed report. And for July, like I said, salaries and, you know, benefits for most of our employees are reflected the last night in June.
I will mention at this point that the state changed the early intervention program back in June or July, right before school started, we were told that there was an addition to a House bill that was put into law right on the 40th day of the, 39th day of the session, and on day 40, it was approved. And so the State Department of Education told us about this in July, right before school started, that they were going to not rate EIP programming as it had been done for the last 15 years, and so that caused us to have to reorganize our EIP program, the coding and such that we have to do and scheduling, and so we will see a decrease of our EIP funding coming into this year. So whenever we get our lot from the state, we will probably see a decrease of $80, something like that, $500,000. It's got to be more. And they hit everybody in the state. They changed the rules, but it is what it is.
Okay, the document we see here, this is the month end of August 31st, 2021. And the beginning fund equity for July, the minute is the $22,765,555.18. We have, and then our 11-month employees are, you know, are paid during this month, so the expenditures are increasing here due to those. End of the month, fund equity is the $22,287,044,012.16 here. And then when you look at the comparison, four-year comparison, you do see a slight decrease of approximately $500,000 there, and that is kind of in line with where we were for previous years, decline in the month of August. And our detailed report here. We'll begin picking up our TAVT revenue here in the month of August. And the final report is the floss report here for the month of August. And the revenue for August was $609,792.54 here. So our average is pretty strong, this floss floss.
Any questions? I think our local economy is really taking off.
I mean, if this floss continues, we're going to have a surplus.
Well, we'll cap out. We'll reach 35 million. We could if this economy continues, unless we have a recession or something.
A lot of money. How does that work?
Typically, you set that, you set that cap at a number that you don't think you'll reach. So we set it at 35 million because we were budgeting, you know, 28 and a half, something like that, so, but if we keep on this pace, we will reach the cap of 35 million. We'll just, we'll stop drawing until the next, next floss. So, those are good.
I was just curious how that makes, unfortunately, you did cap it out.
When you get to that cap, from what I understand, the revenue for it stops, stops.
They stop collecting and stop collecting. So, I mean, does the, would the local.
Just not collect.
I think it would stop collecting for that period of time, but we were talking about that this morning. Would you think maybe about brutal ones that it would go away?
I mean, it's effectively over that point once you get a cap. You've got a date, or you've got a figure, whichever one hits first.
I was just curious, I was curious, are the retailers got to adjust their point-of-sale systems to look like that penny and things like that? Just curious.
That's, that's a.
Of course, that's a, that's looking, that's looking way down the road, I give that, but.
That's a rather new phenomenon, you know?
I know our TVAT is still coming in.
Coffee County is brewing strong. I mean, that's a good thing, you know, for young people, kids to come back here, live, raise family. That's a good thing. All right. Move on. All right. The next item on the agenda is the 21st Century Community Learning Center's grant award, and we received the letter that the grant will be continued, and we have to approve receipt of this grant, and we're asking the board to accept the amount of $350,000 for the 21st Century Grant for this fiscal year. So this has been a wonderful program. The staff, they love those kids, work hard, and do some really good work. So we serve as the fiscal agent for the 21st Century Grant. We partnered with the Boys and Girls Club, and we have partnered with them, and we serve as the flow-through basically for the Boys and Girls Club, and they employ many of our teachers after school, air pros after school, so it's a good program. There's no objection. We'll place that on the consent agenda. The Coffey County Board of Education Annual Training Plan. To meet the requirements of the State Department of Education, we have to have a training plan, so we basically took our plan from last year and adjusted the dates, and we will submit the plan that you see in the board's agenda tonight. It's our. And we will submit, um, the plan that you see in the board's agenda tonight as our training plan for the coming year. Could be the, the Governance Council Training we do with the Charter System Foundation. And then the, uh, GSBA Winter Conference. And then the training that we do with GSBA at our spring retreats that we typically have locally. And then the Spring or Summer Conference that we attend in June. And that will give us the required number of hours to satisfy your required training. The next item on the agenda is the School Nutrition Department. And we have Ms. Dawn Lewis here to tell us about our need for a combi oven. Ms. Lewis?
We, this is to replace an existing oven at Indian Creek Elementary. The oven is no longer operational. And we sent out for quotes and strategic, out of all, Benny Georgia was the lowest quote at twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and seven cents. So I'm asking the board for approval to purchase that. We're operating without one right now.
Yeah, and we really need, we're not gonna ask, ask the board to give us a month, await on us, and then come back next month. I am asking the board to approve this tonight because they need to be up now. If there's no more questions, then we'll add that to the consent agenda. The next item is surplus property. We have two pieces of, uh, well, actually, before we get to that, we have some school nutrition going. All right?
Surplus.
Ms. Lewis, do you want to tell the board about this surplus property?
There is a, a list of miscellaneous equipment that is no longer in use. And we'd like to ask the board to approve it for a surplus, with the exception of the big pieces at the very bottom. The combi oven, which is listed there, is the one that is at Indian Creek, not working. So we're gonna go ahead and put that on surplus and get, and get it out of our inventory since it's not operable. The other is a double-stack oven at Coffee High School, which we're asked, it's non-operable at this point. And we have a grant to replace it, which will be in the next few months. So we're asking to go ahead and approve that as surplus property. And the dish machine and dish table, tables are at West Green Elementary. And they're no longer operable, they're actually from nineteen-seventy-five. Um, so we're asking the board to approve that. Those are the big pieces that we're asking the board. But there's a lot of miscellaneous items that are on there as well that we need to surplus.
All right. And then the next surplus item is the, uh, the real estate, you will see. We have two pieces of property that the system is no longer using. And under the current economy that we're under, it would seem to make sense that if we relinquish these properties and dispose of them, then they will go on the tax digest and they'll be drawing, uh, some tax dollars, property tax. So we're asking the board to approve tonight. The first piece of property is the Nichols. There's a lot, as you can see, right behind the new school. It's, uh, in between the railroad track and the school. There's a road there that runs right in front of it, and there's two homes on each side. Uh, you'll see, put your cursor over the, on each side, there's a house, and then that's an empty lot in the middle. The only reason strategically we might, we won't think about keeping that is access to the school. But if you go to the right over there, Logan, we own that lot, the lot right there, which gives us access to the road. So, uh, Michael has looked at it, Spikes and myself, and it's just strategically, there's no need for us to have that lot. And, uh, there's actually, one of the neighbors there has inquired about purchasing it. And, uh, so in order for us to do anything with it, we have to have the board declare it surplus. So I'm asking the board to approve that, that lot, not as surplus property. So. The other piece of property is the land that was purchased for Brockston Elementary School, Brockston Mary Hayes. Uh, approximately fifteen years ago, this piece of property was purchased. And, uh, the new Brockston School sits right back over here. Now there's the new school. So there's a park right here, the ball field. But we, we really have no need for that property. We didn't build on it because DOT, whenever we, we looked at the building site, we were gonna have to put turning lanes in right here that were gonna cost, because that sits on that curve. And so those turning lanes, I think the estimate was around five hundred thousand dollars. We'd have to spend to improve those, the road there. And then we're also gonna have to improve Ricketson Road here. And it would've cost us a lot of money to put ruined bridges at road and put in the turning lanes there. And so we built the school in front of the existing school, and it's worked out well. So this land, seventeen, uh, approximately seventeen acres. We are leasing it. Somebody is, is farming it, cultivated, or, and so, uh, the question was posed to me, what can we do without? We'd certainly let the farmer get his crop out of field before we, before we let somebody have it, so I'd put that in the agreement. But, uh, we, uh, are asking the board to approve this. And we have, we have tried this before. I think we, we tried to sell that piece of property several years back, didn't have a, an offer that we would accept. But we're asking the board to declare it surplus property again and let's put it out there for a sealed bid, see. Because the economy has certainly changed here in the last twelve months, so. You can go to, there's another document that has the exact, that's the survey piece. So that shows the exact seventeen point six acres. And, uh, it's been surveyed, we just had it surveyed done, so it's, it's ready to sell. So. Any questions about any of that?
Oh, the designated surplus property, I mean, we, we're trying to get out and move this piece from the top.
We're gonna put it, we're gonna advertise for sealed bids. Uh, we prepared the advertisement for the Nichols Lot behind the school, and there's a sign sitting on the property for a sealed bid. We're gonna accept sealed bids on that until October fifteenth, is it? No. Uh, but we're gonna accept, we've got a deadline for sealed bids on the Nichols Property. And, uh, we'll open those sealed bids on that day. And, uh, see if, if we get an offer that the board would accept. And then we've not done anything with the Brockston Property, but our plan is to do the same thing with that. Advertise it in the paper for sealed bids and then put a sign on it for sealed bids and we'll put a date for it.
October nineteenth.
October nineteenth is our deadline for Nichols Lot. And, uh, if somebody makes an offer that the board will accept, and we'll sell it to them. If they don't make a serious offer that the board will accept, we won't sell it.
I guess we'll play that you can do this and you don't get a bid that's not accepted. You know, I mean, we have no need for that problem. So if you do this, but we don't get any bids that, you know, are worth, you know, accepted, you know, how do we keep this for sale till the right person comes along and does maybe, I mean, and we?
Well, we could, we could look at, you know, less than.
I mean, someone that's gonna be the right person coming about the right time.
That's right.
It's got a plan for that property.
That's right.
And so we need some way, if we don't get something out of this person, you know, who wants to let, you know, the other state here know that this is available. If somebody comes through, it's available. I don't like to do that, and I'm just, you know.
Well, we can certainly discuss that.
Write business, write history, come through, but I think it's something, we need to pick up notes later.
That'd be the pleasure of the board. So. All right? All right. All righty. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the system update. I did wanna, uh, talk through some, some items that we're going around and meeting with schools about. We're having faculty meetings, and I had my last faculty meeting, uh, this mor-, or this afternoon. Met with Brockston Mary Hayes staff at two-thirty this afternoon and went through this, uh, PowerPoint. And, uh, so, uh, we wanted to present to the board what we're presenting to the schools and, and make sure y'all are hearing what the, the school faculty is hearing. All right? Our first item that we have on there is, uh, the mission and vision, of course. And we've, we've talked about that in every big destination graduation, college career life, and creating a stronger community, doing applicable and excellent education for everyone to. And the point with that right now, I think, is that our mission and vision is more important than ever. Everything we've been through the last eighteen months with the pandemic and, and all the issues that we've had to work through, I think our mission and vision is more important than ever. Now, this slide deals with the hospital's data that they've been reporting. The hospital, two weeks ago, created this slide, and they had forty-two hospitalized patients for COVID-nineteen. And they had, forty of them were unvaccinated and two were vaccinated. They had eighteen COVID patients on the ventilator, all eighteen were unvaccinated. The message with this that we're sharing with the staff is, please consider getting vaccinated. If you, you know, unless you have a medical reason or some personal reason, I guess, that, that's fine. But I'm encouraging people to get vaccinated. And our, our staff has done, I think, a good job with that. We surveyed them about a month ago, and of the respondents to the survey, approximately sixty percent indicated they had been vaccinated. But I would like to see us get closer to ninety percent vaccinated. And so we're encouraging everyone to get vaccinated. That same graphic has been created at hospitals throughout our state, throughout our country. So at this point, the unvaccinated really are putting themselves in danger, so. This is our COVID report, I just updated this, this afternoon. Uh, last week, we ran the COVID report on Thursday. So I talked with Logan and Ms. Clayton this morning, and I wanted to run the COVID report today. So we're comparing apples to apples. Last week, we ran it on Thursday, and this week, we ran it on Thursday. And you'll see this week, the numbers are, are really a little bit better than they were last week. We've got twenty-four students who are absent due to COVID-nineteen. I think we had approximately forty-four students last week. So, uh, a little bit of improvement there, twenty-four students, that's point two-eight percent of our students that, that have COVID today. Uh, we have seventy-six students absent due to possible exposure. Uh, that, that's, you know, one percent of our student population. And out of our employees, we have almost twelve-hundred employees, eleven-ninety-eight, we have three employees out today who are COVID-positive. And we have two employees who are absent due to quarantine. So, uh, the numbers really look good. And I know that twenty-four students with COVID is serious, and I don't wanna minimize, and don't, anybody mistake me. I'm, I'm not trying to minimize, uh, COVID. We've all lost somebody that we know or loved ones who have passed from it, friends. So it is serious, and, and I don't think that's any intent to downplay the serious nature of COVID. But if you look at this report, what I'm talking, with our people about it, it's kind of flipping the script. When you look at twenty-four, that looks like a big number, and it is a serious number. But when you think about it, more than ninety-nine percent of our students are healthy and don't have COVID. All right? More than ninety-nine percent of our students, or ninety-nine percent of our students are at school and aren't quarantined. Ninety-nine percent of our employees, really more than ninety-nine percent of our employees are healthy, don't have COVID. And ninety-nine percent of our, our employees are at work, more than ninety-nine percent are at work and are not being quarantined. So, you know, I think the conversation should shift away from shutting schools down and things like that to just trying to mitigate COVID and manage COVID and try to work through this thing. So fortunately, that's really a good report and, uh, something that I think we can be optimistic about. Focus on mitigating the spread. Once again, I think we gotta continue to focus on washing your hands, watching your distance, wearing a mask or a face covering, getting vaccinated, monitoring your health, and do the little things. Five weeks down, it's actually seven weeks now. This is the slide from a couple of weeks ago. So we are, we are five weeks down, seven weeks down. And what I'm telling the staff is our community needs us more than ever. Um, the staff, thank you to all of our staff, thank you to our board members for, for helping lead us through this whole thing. And, uh, you know, our, our staff has supported students throughout the pandemic, feeding students, riding buses. Over one million, eight hundred and forty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight meals were served last year. Temperature checking, disinfecting, cleaning, virtual teaching, at-home teaching, in-the-classroom teaching, whatever it takes attitude. If you've read Ward's History of Coffee County, you know that Coffee County was born back in the, the mid, late eighteen hundreds. And it was just wilderness out here, there was nothing here but swamp and wilderness. And, uh, the people that came and settled here, they were Creek Indians and Seminole Indians and then settlers out in the wilderness. And so I, I think you see that whatever it takes attitude still exists here in Coffee County. And, and that's what our staff has deplac-, displayed, just whatever it takes, they get it done. Strategic planning, we're at the beginning of the four-year strategic, or we're in the fourth year of our strategic plan. And we're gonna continue to work our plan. And our, our staff has done that despite the pandemic. The next slide, I've got a couple of the highlights. Our graduation rate is the highest it's ever been. It's, our, our rates of graduation are the highest levels ever. Reward schools, we had Nichols and Satilla, they were here last month, and they were recognized as a reward school. And then we have our growing our own, uh, Coffee County Schools Partnership, South Georgia State College. We've got about fourteen paraprofessionals that are gonna work with South Georgia State College towards getting a teaching degree. And this addresses our, our minority recruitment in our strategic plan and recruitment in general in our strategic plan. So really excited about those things that are going on. Assessments, this deals with the G-MOS, the Springs test scores last year. What I'm telling the staff is, these test scores are, are kind of like a baseline. That if you think back to two thousand and one, nineteen ninety-nine, around that era, that's when the No Child Left Behind Act started. That's when we saw a lot of these improvement initiatives that we've started working with over the last twenty years that really started managing the curriculum, using assessments, uh, pacing the curriculum, accountability. And we made a lot of gains in the last twenty years. But I think it's almost as if we've hit reset. And, and we've had kids, if, if they got out in March of twenty, all right? We've had students who have not been back in a classroom until now, all right? And in some systems, some school systems, they're still out. If, if they started school under, under COVID conditions at the point where they weren't returning to school and they're still virtual, they're still out. So we've got a generation of students that we're gonna have to really work hard to, to bring back to the levels that we expect, the levels we were at prior to COVID. So I'm telling all of our staff, there's, there's plenty of opportunities, their jobs are more important than ever, and, uh, they're gonna be needed more than ever. Because we're gonna have a generation of young people who are needed to be in the classroom and have good teaching going on more than ever. But as far as test scores for last year, we're not putting a lot of concern on those scores because they were teaching at home, in virtual, all three, uh, so anyways. Recent successes, despite the pandemic, last fall, uh, we had been looking at the, the test data for several years. And it was quite apparent, and, and we, we looked at the data and studied the data, that, that our students needed a systematic phonics component as part of our literacy program. And it was just apparent that we needed something to address that piece in early literacy. So last fall, our schools, our elementary schools rolled out Saxon Phonics, and we're gonna continue that implementation and refine that and get it to, to the point where we're the best in the state at delivering that, that phonics piece. And then academies, we've rolled out the academies at Coffee High School. They've transformed Coffee High School, its whole school reform. And, uh, we've got the new pathway of wire grass. And we've got the new pathway at Wiregrass. It's just taken off, no pun intended. But the aviation pathway is just taking off, and so that's in its infancy stages. And then partnering with Coffee Regional for managing the nursing program, and then the success for Boys and Girls Club. So we've had a lot of success over the past twelve, sixteen months. School safety, we upgraded the camera systems. When this slide was made, we had two schools remaining. We may have one at this point. But we've put the new camera systems in all the schools. If there's one remaining, they will have it shortly. So upgraded camera systems, Synthetics Alarm, and we're gonna demonstrate that in a minute. But we've put the Synthetic system in all the schools, and they, they rolled out the cards that all the staff will have earlier this week and late last week. So all the schools have the Synthetic system going. And then the environmental sensors, the vaping detectors that we put in, in the schools, the middle and high schools. And then the Raptor system, where you have to produce an I D to get the gang entry into the, into the school. So, and if you're, if you're only convicted child abuse list, when they run their I D through there, if they've been convicted of child abuse, it'll pop up, and we won't let them in our school. All right? So demonstrating, that's my last slide, wanted to demonstrate Synthetics. So we've got, I guess you're holding up your phone just so you can see that you're one of the people that would get, that would get the message. All right. So I'm going to attempt to set off the Synthetic system, and we'll see what happens. So imagine that I'm going to visit a school, and I walk in one of the doors, and I look out there and I see somebody coming in with a gun. What would I do? What, you know, if you, or I see him across the parking lot going in with a gun. Well, I'm on. All right, it's going off on my watch. See the flashers, so we know to lock down. So we would go shut that door, we'd shut that door. So we have this system in all of our buildings now. So all the staff has their code, and they can, they can lock the building down.
And that's location based, like when you mash that.
Logan, why, before you turn it completely off, let me see that screen.
Yeah, see, it shows me that I set mine off.
Well, I'm saying, so when you set it off here, it's not setting off school across the county, it's setting off where you're at.
That's right here. Yeah. So, and it shows where I'm at in the building. So if they need to define me, they can find me. So... And that is up and going in all of our schools now. And there is a component where they can mash it three times. If I was in the building and there was a, let's say I'm teaching in a classroom, and I have two kids getting in a fight, and I'm having problems trying to separate them, and I need some help, then I can mash it three times, one, two, three, and it won't lock the school down like that. But it'll just send Dr. Banks and Chris Elrod, it'll send them a message, and I need some help, and they'll know to come down there and help me. And it'll come up on their screen just like that, so they would see where I'm at. They would know to where, know to come help me. So all of our staff have a badge like that now, and all of our schools have the technology. So, anyway. Any questions?
Do you want to mention the community responders that will also be integrated to the system?
Yeah, the law enforcement and first responders will be. They'll, they'll get a notice too. So, they'll go to law enforcement. All right. So school safety, and we'll continue to work on it. Yes, sir. I would ask for an executive session to discuss personnel and real estate and also school safety plan. Give a motion. Mr. Wade. The rookie. All right. All right, we have a motion to have an executive session.
Motion, we expect an session.
The lot, Wade, all right. Okay, what session is adjourned?